Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. I want to start off by establishing a forum by what we'll call, let's start with people. Here, Corby.
Here.
Jen?
Here.
John?
Here.
I'm here as well, so we officially have a forum. Nicole, has this meeting been properly noticed?
It has.
Thank you. Jen, would you go ahead and read our equity statement and our results policy?
Yes, our VASD interim equity statement reads, "Each student has access to the resources and educational rigor they need at the right moment in their education regardless of race, gender, gender identity, ethnicity, ability, language, sexual orientation, religion, family background, or family income." Our VASD mission statement reads, "Each student will acquire the knowledge and skills necessary to achieve their personal goals, thrive in a diverse global society, and lead a healthy, self-fulfilling life."
Thank you so much, and just for the minutes we have, Christina with us now as well. So, let's see, the next step we have is adoption of the agenda. Are there any questions about the agenda, or is there a motion to approve this presentation? So, a motion from Jen, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Nicole, all in favor, signify with a "aye."
Aye.
Aye, the agenda is adopted. With that, we will move straight into the superintendent's report.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us for our regular Board of Education meeting. We have a very full agenda today, so we'll try to be very concise with the opening comments, but I wanted to lift up two celebrations before we go into some of our policy work for OE6 and for our 2.11. The two celebrations I would like to present to the board is, just came today, so we felt like we could get away with not having it directly in the presentation room. We literally just got the information maybe 90 minutes ago, if that. First, we got a vote from DPI in his fifth. Special education updated that Ronin School District met the IDA requirements and moved from the district that was previously identified as district in need of monitoring by the IDAs. We have moved out of that designation due to the great work of our special education teams this year and some of the realignment work that we did to support the students. We think about intentional moves that we've made, we'll talk about some little bit of results policy, but this is just further evidence of progress in world special education. Second, and it was just kind of a good news Monday, we received information from DPI that did great leadership and the great work of the staff at Country View, who has moved out of that designation, so they have no longer assisted targeted school for improvement. That means they hit the categories overall, as well as the focus groups where we were formerly underperformance in our focus group area. So, congratulations to Country View for their great work, for Jess and her team, and shout out to the staff who have just worked amazingly hard on our focus group areas to not just move the students, but we know what it means for their ability to thrive in a global society, so we're thankful to Country View and all the schools for their great work.
That's fantastic, yes, absolutely. Please pass along our congratulations and our thanks to Country View.
Absolutely. So, while I was doing that, rightly so, our business team then snuck over here on my left. Welcome back to the stage. We have Chad Beazey and Pete, we may know them from their former roles as referendum producers. And we're thankful for their presentation. Now, I kind of want to, we're going to do two pieces of this. First is an overview of the audit for this year, and the audit also has certificates in the operations policy six, which the audit was listed under multiple indicators, so we're going to do a preview of the audit, pause, and then open up OE6 for discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Clarity. Pete reminded me on the way up, and Corby emerged into this just at the right time, that we were certainly and will continue to be regular invitees to school board meetings, but I think the board got sick of the Chad and Pete show, and we're happy to be back. If you haven't had a chance to meet Pete Rinder, so Pete's our director of finance, so he'll be with us tonight, walk us through the audit, and certainly be here some resources and work our way through OE6. So, I did want to kind of turn things over to Pete to walk us through the annual audit. The board should know that the audit has been posted to our website and interested in both transparency with both the board and the community. And Pete can walk you through the ins and outs and answer any questions you might have about the annual audit, and how it applies to our board policy. And I can tell you that we had to push our auditors on a regular basis to dig into our board policy. The audit is really, it is an examination of accounting practices, not necessarily aligned directly to what we wrote into board policy, and that's okay. A lot of it has to do with making sure that, you know, at the end of the day, nearly $100 million all lands on the right line due to DPI reporting, and again, with this idea of transparency, and also to make sure that we've got the appropriate checks and balances in place on our team, that the money passing through our district is approved and checked at the right places. And it's a credit to our small and mighty accounting team. I can tell you that we are on a smaller size in terms of our team, in terms of the size of our budget. So, we've got certainly a Pete Rinder as our director, and then we've got a district accountant, Teresa Phillips-Malick, and then another essentially purchaser, and what was Adrian's official, it was a specialist, but now it's more like accounting specialist. And it's Adrian Kaiser who is in charge of essentially all the payments that head out of the district. And Michael Account helps where he can. Michael does a lot of transportation, but has a, is a very skilled asset on our team that was a huge part of what the board's going to see tonight in OE6. So, a huge thank you to our finance team for all the work that they did this last year. Pete's going to give us a quick overview of what happened through the audit, and then we hope to dive into OE6, and we know if they don't want to end it.
Excellent, thank you, Chad. And I also want to relay my thanks to some of the staff we have in our business office, especially Teresa. Teresa and I spent hours and hours making dozens of reports and auditor requests and meetings with the auditors, and it kept us really, kept us really busy here, except the referendum wasn't keeping us busy enough here at the time, but big thanks to her. And I also wanted to point out, Rochelle Haiti's staff also had to prepare a lot of reports that went to some actuaries that also tied into the audit, so a big thanks to...
And in OE6.
And also in OE6, too. So, thank you to Rochelle and her staff, and as Chad had mentioned, also to Michael and Adrian in the business office, too, because they were also very good in getting the stuff. So, anyway, as we're even starting here, so what is an audit, right? It is an examination of the financial report of an organization by someone independent of that organization. So, they are attempting to ensure that the book of accounts are properly maintained, and they do that just by random testing a selected number of transactions. They are, as Chad said, they're reviewing our internal controls, they're reviewing our principles, they're reviewing our significant estimates, as it says up here. It's not designed to capture everything, because they are doing random testing, but it is based off their opinion, they can look at our books, determine whether or not they think it's free of material misstatement, or if it doesn't comply with any sort of state or federal requirements. It is a, it is a real good idea to have an audit, just because it gives accountability and accountability, and also can we go to the next slide? Not only is it a good idea, it's also the law. We are required to have this by state statute, all school districts are required to have a financial audit, and that's what we're talking about tonight. You see on the bullet point list up here, there are three types of audit. One is the financial audit, that's what I'm reviewing tonight. There's also something called a single audit, and that's only for districts if their federal revenue is greater than $750,000. Ours is, not counting even SRS funds, because SRS funds depend on how we're spending that, we're somewhere around $400,000 to $500,000 of federal revenue is what's flowing through into the district. Then there's also the membership audit, which you're only selected at random once every four years, or sometimes a little more often than that, just depending on what they, what DPI chooses on that. The single audit and membership audit aren't nearly as in depth as this one is, but they're also very important. DPI has a list of some approved auditing firms, so when we are going to be going out to bid for our next auditor, because our contract will be working with CLA again next year, because that's how long our contract goes, but then we'll likely go to put a bid in RFP for this, but it hasn't officially been signed yet, it was probably been decided. So, there are some firms that we can work with. And audit firms just like us, they have to report all of our information to DPI. We have similar reports that we have to submit to DPI checks and make sure everything ties between my reports and their reports, and DPI is verifying that everything ties that way. So, go to the next slide. So, the results. So, it was a successful audit for the Ronin Area School District this year.
Good, just clarify, we're only talking about the audit results right now.
Yes, okay, the external audit, okay. Our external audit results was successful from what our auditors are saying, as you can see all the bullet points up here, every time we have a "no," that's a good thing, so there's no difficulties to get information from us or disagreements with us. There is that one uncorrected immaterial misstatement up there, and basically what that was is, there was a new accounting rule that said we had to change how we were accounting for leases. These are the Apple leases that we're using for all the iPads in the district here, and the old way is we record them as an expense in the current year. Now, the new way is we record them as an expense in the current year, and all the future years you put them on balance sheets liability. We didn't have them on balance sheets liability. Since it was a small dollar amount to scheme, the whole scheme of things, and that lease is set to expire in the next year or two, they call that immaterial misstatement. They didn't list one recommendation of a growth area about how our district would accomplish the ability to prepare most journal entries without the approval, without my approval, and the auditor is recommending that we review the process. This is something that they had brought up last year, and last year after the audit, we started, we started doing that, where now Teresa will submit journal entries to me, but as a couple of the random ones that they selected were ones that she had just done on her own, too. But they grabbed six of them at random, one of which was one of my journal entries that I did, and a couple were prior to the audit report came out, but then there were a couple more that she still needed to send through. So, we're reviewing that process and making sure that she doesn't do it next time.
Pete, can you give us a Cliff Notes definition of what a journal entry is in your board?
The journal entry is just a way where we can record the financial transaction, and in this case, like in her case, it was we had recorded some items on one of the school activity accounts, or we were recognizing an expense, and whomever had made the first journal entry on here recognizing this expense had it in the wrong account, Teresa put it into the correct account, but she didn't put it through me.
So, yeah, and I clarified that for Dr. Clarity. So, this is our own internal accounting to make sure that the money eventually being sent off of Adrian's desk with several different checks and balances for approval is tied to the correct account number. Is that...
Yes.
Is that the case of most journal entries?
Thank you.
Yes.
And that's the way it's...
All right, I'm going to finish us off here, and then see if there's questions about the audit. So, we did ask the auditor several times, and actually did it in writing, relate to reference our, reference OE6, and the responses from CLA are there in quotes. So, we asked them to reference 6.2 and 6.3, which calls out the audit specifically, 691, which calls out the audit specifically, and 6102, and their response was kind of boilerplate, but essentially said that this is reference to the government auditing standards report, and they would have identified, this is noncompliance related to this policy, if there were any, and they did not identify any. I reminded Dr. Clarity this morning, and this is potentially we pushed into the next RFP related to our auditors relative to their services, but the board will see if we work our way through OE6. Independent of the audit, our team has provided physical evidence of us carrying on all this work. The audit is another check and balance, and in many places, in many regards, the audit actually is not entirely intended to support board policy, it's to make sure that we are legal and have checks and balances in place to make sure we're taking care of money. And the nuance of some of the board policy isn't necessarily always the best place for an audit, but we can push on that. Next time we send out an RFP, we push on our auditors this time to the point that we're like, give us some quotes we can throw on the slides, if the board understands that we did press into, into the audit. With that being said, we can certainly answer your questions about the audit. The board can choose to tie those questions back into our presentation for OE6. We could go either way.
And then, go ahead.
Sorry, just a quick reminder to our board that one thing that Chad and Pete did not mention is regards to the additional questions that we, and work that we ask our auditors to do, that OE6 was not passed until January of last year. So, it was, some of the audit work was already completed, and we went back to the policy and said, here are some things that we now, as a school community, our board has new expectations around the way that we discuss and work in due finance, and ask them to go back now and add the additional layers. But just timing wise, just wanted to put that in perspective, that it was an audit that was already in progress with us pushing back in. July 1st to June 30th.
So, I just have a, maybe a quick question, and then just a statement. Starting with the statement, I just wanted to give kudos. I think it's awesome that you guys were asking the auditing company to do this, especially as Dr. Clarity and all of us try and stay very mindful about how much time this takes you all, especially with OE and monitoring reports. I think it's super smart to ask the people we're already paying money to, to take this into account, and I'm super excited to hear you talk about inclusion in the RFP next year, and I think it just points to your level of professionalism, so thank you for including that. And then, my only question was, how do we keep up with changing regulations? Is that something that's like published? You mentioned the one about adding it to the future, like how do we keep up with that?
In a case like this, we, if it's something that will affect school districts, we usually get an email request from DPI, although I get maybe two emails from them every week, but something will pop in there and say, hey, look, Alfred Gatsby, AD 74, because they will have to do this. And of course, the way they'll word it, I'll have to end up asking the auditors, how does this affect us and what do we do? So, that's how we, that's how we keep up with that. Most of all, it's DPI reports.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, I think the other thing that we have in place, and I've certainly seen this with Dr. Clarity and his cohort of the county superintendents, there's a weekly meeting of the Madison area business directors, and this work is so complicated and sometimes so detail oriented, that there is their own little professional learning community that they're watching each other. So, I can ask Pete a question, if he has no answer, I drop him a hat. He's on the phone with five or six different colleagues in different districts that are bumping into this. So, there are no secrets in the world of school finance, which has been really great to see, so that's, they're all in it together, because the work is really complicated. All right, you guys ready for OE6?
Yeah, I'm sure.
Please.
Before we go into OE6, we're going to have, ask our report president to read round us in our monitoring process. I'll have some opening statements around OE6, and then we'll get you rolling. I know a dry run is a dry run, we've done this for about seven minutes off pace right now. We'll try to get this going.
Okay, I won't take too long. All right, as we're going through this process, if you guys remember, last year I gave, I made this, and yours one, and that was just for our indicators. I shot in a link to this in everybody's email, so if you have a electronic version, but I'm not going to go through it all, because that would be incredibly tedious, and I apologize in advance. But, the point is, we've already covered the first three steps on this. We're now at the second step of the monitoring process, which is just we got monitoring the results and OE procedures or policies. But what I wanted to point out here is as we're going through this, there's two different standards that we're using. For OEs, we've already gone through with its compliance. As we're doing results, we're monitoring, are we making reasonable progress? So, I wanted to kind of just outline this as we're going through it, so we can make sure that we're going in the right direction with our questions. We should be looking to keep our questions based on the evidence that's presented. Does the evidence that presented tie into the indicators that we've already approved? And does that demonstrate for us that compliance has been achieved, or that reasonable progress has been made? The whole thing kind of, again, tracks with how we had the interpretations and indicators, how do we vote on this, how do we make an amendment if we need to? There's a page that has what are the permissible amendments during this process, what are the impermissible things that we are not going to be raising at this process? And then, if you guys just take a look through it, there's just how do we vote on it, what does that mean, and then what are the next steps once we have voted and disposed of a monitoring report? There's re-monitoring in a year, there's also, as we've talked about, I think we ran into this even just at our last time, what do we do with modifications? And this kind of spells out how the superintendent can initiate a modification at any time. However, the board has to be the ones who approve it for anything that's substantive. If it's a non-substantive thing, grammar, spelling, superintendent can change it without, you know, bringing it to the board. The board, by majority vote, can request a modification, but to do so, it's when the existing indicators don't allow the board to monitor compliance or measure progress of the policy, and the request is going to meaningfully and materially advance the board's monitoring capabilities. The reason there's kind of a high bar for this is that we don't want to be changing what the, kind of changing the goalposts mid-stride, and we also want to make sure that we're getting data that can show how we're growing over a period of time. But then, if we have something where there's a gap in what we're actually doing, if our capabilities are not there because of indicators missing, we do have a way to fix that. We don't make the modifications, we send it back to Dr. Clarity to make the modifications, and then bring it back to us for approval. All right, so, probably longer than we needed, but nonetheless, we have this kind of to check out if we're at a place where we're, what do we do? Let's go back to it, we can read round.
Thank you. So, as we get ready to embrace our work today, I'll say this again when we begin the results policy here shortly. The operations policies and the monitoring report are completely different than the results policy, so we are actually have to kind of shut down part of your brain after we finish this one, reboot, and then move over to results. In the world of operations, we are in a space of, we are in compliance, and it's because it's very technical work, we're compliant with some minor exceptions, but we're not in compliance at all. Whereas in results, we are, it's always about making progress, and the bar measured is about making progress as an organization. So, after evaluating the evidence and the indicators per the board vote of 5-0 on November 15th, we, I have established that, in my opinion, and ultimately to the, it'll be the vote of the board to determine if I am accurate or not, that 28 of the 28 measures are in compliance for OE6. I want to give a, I know they recognize the full business team, I want to continue to reiterate the work that this business team did in concert with multiple other departments within our organization. And in digital copy, sometimes it's hard to tell the amount of evidence that was presented or prepared for the board to review, so we had to, really had to print out the full hard copy of it, and we are, much like OE4, we are well past 250 pieces of documents of evidence, because there's not many more important things you can do, if not any more important than demonstrate evidence of fiscal responsibility in addition to this, so that we are accountable to taxpayer money and resources, and we hold ourselves to our own accountability for that. With that, we're going to move to Chad to open up OE6. Again, thank you to Pete, Chad, for your months of work to prepare for tonight, and then we will put it back to the board for questions after the presentation.
Sounds good. And for anyone who's looking at the, kind of the process, it's page three that we're on right now for us.
Okay, thank you for that, Dr. Clarity, and the board has certainly seen the monitoring report, the associated audit. We did our best to make, finding the evidence as user-friendly as possible with the hyperlinks in there, because to compile all those evidence came from another number of sources. I recommended it to Dr. Clarity today, that I just go through with a Cliff Notes version of our findings and related evidence, and then open it up to the board if they have specific questions around any kind of the separate subcategories of OE6. And so, I will do that, I'll do my best not to just read this slide. So, 6.1 is intended essentially to make sure that we're paying our, all of our bills, including payroll, and there are four indicators aligned with that. We publish a calendar detailing when we're going to do it, we process it on time, all of our liabilities, including WRS, federal withholdings, and so forth, are made, and that the board doesn't receive any complaints regarding the above three. And we believe we've met all of those indicators and provided the appropriate evidence. 6.2, this is, and this was one of the ones that took the most work behind the scenes for us to get off, off the ground. So, anything that didn't reach the board approval threshold, $250,000, and fell in between that $10,000 basement, had to go through our own internal processes to make sure that we were getting essentially competitive pricing on any of those purchases. A huge change in the way this district had operated historically, and some cranky directors and budget owners initially, and now it's a, it is a smooth sailing little deal in the finance office. There was a funny moment just a couple of weeks ago, where Pete was going to push through a purchase, and walked back to Adrian's desk, and she handed him a purchasing approval form that I had to sign. So, there are many checks and balances to make sure that those things are in place. So, we have three indicators there, the annual audit doesn't find anything. Two, P cards are a check, so the vast majority of our P cards have under $10,000 threshold. Anything that is over $10,000, I have to approve, and again, Pete and Adrian have an eye on. Any swipe that would ever happen over $10,000, they are justifying, and then all of the purchases happening over $10,000 meet that purchasing checklist that we've attached. It took us a little bit of time to get that off the ground after the board approved it. We have to meet with all the directors and budget owners and get a system and a tool built, but once the tool was in place, we're perfect on it. We got it locked tight to the point that a check will not be issued until all that work is happening.
Just for clarification, the superintendent falls under that category as well. I have to go to our...
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Yes, so. 6.3, any transaction in excess of $250,000 has to be approved by the board, and there are three indicators related to that. We have to provide corresponding bid summary, or proof that we're part of a purchasing cooperative, similar to like our food service order for the year, or part of a state co-op that shops for competitive pricing. External audit finds no instances of us going outside of that, and you guys approved everything that crossed our desk, $250,000, and we actually provided a board meeting whenever all of that happened. OE4, that we will coordinate with the board's auditor, and that is detailed in the audit. So, the audit performance is performed on qualified opinion, as Pete mentioned, and that we require, we sent all the information they requested in a typed manner, and we actually got the auditor provide a cover sheet detailing that. 6.5, the district will make reasonable attempts to collect any funds due to the district, and two indicators there, all the funds due to state and federal government are collected and scheduled, and two, and this one is... And two, and this one is of any of the ones that we, we can continue to push on. We could have spent a ton of time and we, we gathered a bunch of data from the school board. But even today, Cindy notified me of us starting to push a little harder on our families with overdue lunch balances. And there is, there's a little bit more, that, that work is a little more of a gray scale in terms of knowing our families, know, knowing who we're pushing on in terms of collecting funds that are due to the district. We provided the board with several examples of us doing that work on an ongoing basis, all the way to small things. Six point six, the superintendent of key accurate financial records and funds. And that's really the work of the audit. They're, they're diving into that. So an external audit says all of our money is on the appropriate budget line and recording receipts and expenditures. Six point seven, we owe publishing a financial condition statement on an annual basis. Three indicators for that, audits posted to our website and it's there. The annual audit, the annual meeting booklet published ten days prior to the annual meeting. We will see here, or we know it as an annual meeting again, but that did happen. And then our year-end financial statement reflects at least a ten percent fund balance. We have a sheet and evidence directly tied to that. Six point eight, the superintendent can't expend more funds than are received in a fiscal year. The big idea here is that if that were to happen, we would essentially be dipping into fund balance and overspending our budget on an annual basis. So that the board's received an annual audit that demonstrated we did not do that last year. And again, I've talked to the board about the fact that one, one and a half, two percent of unspent resources on an annual basis is actually a healthy place for our district to do financially as we continue to make sure that our fund balance is built to the point that our bond rating stays in a, in a big spot. And we have the possibility of larger one-time purchases that wouldn't, we wouldn't have to do a rough amendment for. So we met that, it was six point eight. Six point nine, the superintendent may not affect the organization. And the board's been through this this year. We borrowed money to make payroll, actually during this past window. We can't do that without the board's approval and work through the board with that. And the auditors found the same thing and they dove into that short-term borrowing to make sure that we followed all the appropriate steps we did so. Six point ten, superintendent can't permanently transfer money from one fund to another. This is like DPI school accounting one oh one. And it requires that if we are going to transfer funds, that we approve that, we do that with board approval. And we did that one time last year and we took a budget amendment to the board. Middle of last winter, Pete Matt presented it and the board approved it. And no other money was moved in between funds. And this is another thing that the auditors take a hard look at to make sure that none of that's happening. And we met the criteria for both of those. Six eleven, the superintendent may not allow any required reports to be overdue. So we had four indicators for that. We present, presented financial information on a monthly basis to the board. And you receive that, that's the check registry and us having one hundred percent transparency with the public and the board on a, on a monthly basis, the auditors took a look for it. We had DPI required reports filed. Pete actually took a screenshot of our DPI dashboard that in some regards has been middle checkmarks, just like the ones we're looking at tonight. And that the board wasn't notified during this fiscal year of the federal or state agencies not having any of our reports filed. Lastly, the superintendent can't process or disperse funds under control that would be insufficient with those generally accepted accounting principles again. The single indicator there is the auditor takes a look for internal control weaknesses. If Dr. Clarity wants a check issued to someone or anyone in the organization, there are several people grabbing hands on it. Do we have the funds? Is it allowed with board policy? Can, can we approve it? And then again, you all see the money that heads out the door of this district on a monthly basis as well as another check for that. That is it. Happy to go back. That was the best I can do with a Cliff Notes version, but we are here to answer your questions.
Okay, so now would be the great time to, we're on page three of our process. But we can ask any questions. We want to start with OE one and just go through the list? Or do we just want to jump in? I'm not sure how many questions the board has. Go ahead, John.
On OE six point one, assuring that payroll, does that include like that we're ensuring that we're doing withholdings properly? And that as well, that's included in payroll?
I, I would say six point three point one would be tied to WRS and all of the other withholdings.
It's all laundry, okay.
Anything else, any other questions? We're just really preparing to know. This is, I think as we get especially into some of the more complicated ones, this is, I mean, you've presented, yeah, a huge stack of evidence, so.
That was, we joked on the way over here that this is, I mean, this was hundreds of hours of behind the scenes work to get all of this together. But it is worth our time. If we can check all of these and the board has reviewed it and can see that we've done the work. So it's, in my mind, it's a positive thing that we've been so transparent with, with meeting these indicators. There shouldn't be a ton of questions. This is, we either did it or we didn't. And did we provide the evidence that it happened? So that's in my mind, a good thing.
Thank you. Okay, any, do you have any other questions?
Are we going on to other indicators or?
If there's other indicators that you have questions, yeah, we can keep.
Yeah, I just have one more.
Okay.
On six point two, you mentioned when you were going through this that it took a while to set up the system because the system beforehand of her, these administration wasn't working this way. And we're saying that we're in compliance from the start of that system being implemented, which probably is shorter than a year, right?
Yeah, Dr. Clarity, Joe, and I, and I had a similar conversation. So if we are taking that indicator literally, the, it would have been impossible the next morning, the next Tuesday morning to guarantee that that took place. So we documented it for the board, every purchase that happened last year over ten thousand dollars and made notes in the far right-hand column in terms of us, we're kind of in PD mode. Here's the time period that a purchasing tool was actually developed. And here's the time of implementation. And we took it at, from the time it was even possible to implement the policy, that we hit a hundred percent. And it would be our expectation that, that spreadsheet is all green next year because now everyone is up to speed on what we got.
So are there any other questions about any of the other OE? We can kind of jump in around or if there's no other questions, we can move on. Thank you for all of the work that you put into this. I mean, this was a huge lift, so very much appreciated.
Absolutely.
Okay, so the members of the board have received and have discussed the superintendent's monitoring report for OE six. Now it's the board's responsibility to consider the report as evidence of operational compliance. I will accept a motion to accept and approve the report as presented. Is there a motion?
Sure.
There's a motion from John. Okay, so now this is the time for the board to discuss anything that we have.
Is there any second?
No.
Not for this one?
Not yet.
All right, yeah, okay.
We could, if we want to get a second, we can get a second when we're ready to like move forward, but anyway. Is there other, any other, are there any questions that the board has about whether or not compliance has been demonstrated? I would not be surprised if there is not. Okay.
And just to reiterate sort of the lack of questions, just being symbolic of the fact that as a board, I think we've all invested sort of our homework time, that you've shared these materials with us in advance in a timely enough way, that we are not seeing this for the first time tonight. So just to give that transparency that we've been able to dig through this evidence because of the robust nature of it, to be able to kind of do these checks and balances and come up with questions on our own. But again, at least for me, with not being the expert that understands the ins and outs of all of the statutes related to DPI and the school finance, that this tells me the story that satisfies the checks and balances you've asked for in terms of showing compliance with, you know, taking care of finances for the district. So just wanted to put voice to kind of the process that our lack of, or at least for me, my lack of questions is not for a lack of confidence in the work and time spent reviewing all the materials that you've shared.
And in my mind, there is, there's a kind of a two-track agenda here. It's, it's my job and Dr. Clarity's job and Pete's job to provide evidence to the board. But this is all now public record. And our community now has a chance to see the work we've done in terms of taking care of their tax dollars. So it, it serves two roles in my, especially in this case when it's, when it is a hundred million dollars going through this organization. It's important that we show the public we're taking care of it and doing it correctly.
Okay, John, you were right. I'm always, because I'm always looking to approve this at the first jump, every single time. So now I like corrected myself so much that I'm not even doing the first part. So we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, a second from John.
Okay, now we can actually move to all in favor of approving the OE as presented, signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The OE has been approved as presented. Thank you very much for your time. See, I'm either going to approve it right off the bat or I'm going to not even get to that part. It's going to be, I've got to find it.
We've got this handy.
Let's try to.
I know. Yeah, I can try small and I can see it.
Put it out there. We caught that one here. Your title?
We're two minutes spare.
I just wanted it.
That's an old bronzer, maybe, because we didn't have it.
The first, first part might go a little long, but hey.
I can make this take long.
All right, so as we're going to the next part, again, we're shifting gears from compliance to reasonable progress.
Academic Services Team.
Come on down. You're the next presenters. Is this reasonable progress?
Good evening.
Good evening.
How's it going? So again, I want to transition appropriately from operations to, to results. We think of results, in all the applications we think of, we think of students doing it. I'm always as well, but I think of results, outcomes. Those are direct student performances that we have made a commitment to continue to improve in the Brown Air School District. And we take pride in providing additional data that goes above and beyond the indicators that goes into, into focus with the area. We want to know how our students are doing to a totality. We also want to know demographically, are we, do we have strategies in place that are allowing for the appropriate growth of all our students regardless of all the factors that are indicated on, in our faculty statement? That is when, and that we say it comes alive when we improve it, in student outcomes. Different from OE, results are purely in a measure of are you making appropriate progress as an organization? We talk about this as a team all the time. The moment that we are quote-unquote all green as an organization, then we're not pushing ourselves hard enough. That means we're asking the wrong question because you can't say we're, the system continues improvement and then we give you something that says, yeah, we got it all right, but it's just not, that's, that's not, that's not the case. And we all continue, we're lifelong learners ourselves and we learn and grow. We expect our students to be lifelong learners to, to learn and grow. So I'm very proud to have the academic services team talk about our reasonable progress. And we did, as being very tough graders of ourselves, mark two areas with, with exceptions. And we'll, you'll see that when it's broken down into some focus areas. We, we felt like we, we were making reasonable progress with the exception of students with disabilities and aging students. I will quite frankly say this to be very just here in order to bore sometimes our, our age student population, this is not to talk about enough. And so I would go and go back in time and thank our board for making that extra commitment in alignment with the policies that were already in place to identify the, the need for representation in our curriculum as that was part of life and we dedicated that as one of the necessary leadership moves. But when you think about last year going into this year and presenting results along the way, we still have, have, have work to do in supporting those, those, those two very important members of our, of our student body. So you may look at the data and say you made enough progress or we're just, again, we're tougher to ourselves. And we, we just felt like we made reasonable progress, but couldn't fairly say that those, that those two categories met, met our, met our high standard. All right, so with that, I'm delighted to have Dr. Hawkins, the leader of Academic Services Team and her great team of directors to present, present the information.
So good evening, everyone. First, let me publicly thank our entire academic services team for the work that has gone into pouring over data and putting together the responses to the results indicators. And especially want to thank Adam and Amy and Rose Maria, they're here presenting. Karen Socks Glover, who was a huge contributor to the information that you're going to hear tonight. And then we also owe a great deal of thanks and gratitude to our educators and our building leaders for their efforts to improve student outcomes. Because the work that we're doing at Central Office, the work that you all support, means nothing when it doesn't, or if it doesn't impact the work that's happening in the classroom. And tonight, you know, as you all listen to the report, you know, it represents a story. Last week, we attempted to share with you all all the, all the assessments, how we use them, their purposes, why we use them. And so tonight, you're going to see the rewards and the responses and the results from that work. But more importantly, think about each, as we're talking about each dataset as a student, as a group of students that are in the classrooms, that the work that we're doing is making a direct impact. I want to take you to June twenty twenty-two because we're talking about R two one one. But just to kind of give you some background on some of the, I'll, I'll jump ahead and there's another slide, it was just a talking point. You know, our whole entire central office leadership team spent a great deal of time at the School Administrators Institute for Transformational Leadership. And so as an entire team, we looked, we poured over our data. We looked at what's happening in our district. And then we arrived at, there is a need for our students to be literate across all disciplines. Hence, we arrived at our district life goal focusing on disciplinary literacy. And so that was one of the levers that is a result of the work that we've done. And as we go through the indicator tonight, you're going to hear our directors talk about the data. They're going to talk about the progress that we've made. But more importantly, they're going to talk about the leadership moves. And then they're going to talk about the next steps that will possibly happen, or not possibly, but will happen after looking at this data and what's going to happen in the future. So R two one one says the Board of Education values student learning and achievement that meets or exceeds grade hall standards as well as goal setting as a cornerstone for teaching and learning. The Board of Education expects all students to learn language arts concepts in an organized way during the school year across all grades, concentrating on a clear set of literacy skills and concepts that will allow all students to solve complex real-world problems. And so what that speaks to clearly is the focus and the emphasis on disciplinary literacy. Our students need to be able to read to solve math problems. They need to be able to read to be critical thinkers. They need to be literate and be able to understand art has meaning, music has meaning, there is meaning to be made in everything. So that being said, I am going to turn it over. Well, I'll go through all the slides to indulge you all since to Adam, Pete, we're able to go through some we don't want to. We'll go through all of the slides. So R two one one, again, talks about each student being literate and numerate. And then we'll talk about the indicator assessments. And last week, we talked about ACT aspire. We talked about STAR reading English. We talked about STAR early literacy. We talked about STAR reading in Spanish. And then we also mentioned. And then we also mentioned pre-ACT and the secondary assessments. And so from that, I will turn it over to Adam, who is going to speak to the first indicators.
And then just for clarification between the two presentations, the Academic Services Team desires that you ask questions between, after each indicator as compared to the other.
So to start, to kind of ground, ground the board, and this will be a common theme as we go through these indicators, the overarching leadership moves that have led to growth in so many of our indicators. And to try to speak to this and to your really justice to the work that our schools are doing on a daily basis, our teachers, our teacher teams, our support staff, supporting interventions, our special educators, our ESL teachers, our BRTs, our related arts teachers, our coaches, our, all of those people. The work that is going into building communities of practice in our schools, I mean, that's really the work on a daily basis through PD and coaching walkthroughs and all of these things, grounded in the continuous improvement cycles our schools have done, that are leading to improved outcomes for our students. And so when I highlight a few of these, that again, it just doesn't seem right to give it a minute or two, because this is the daily work and the alignment of this in our buildings to make meaning of really deep discussions about students and what they need. I think has been just amazing inspirational work happening uniquely in each school, given their context, which is the whole intention of our theory of action process. And so the, the focus as a district in developing structures for staff collaboration and the kind of freedom within limits that these schools has to make that work for them within the amazing teaching teams. The different instructional models that are present in our model in what kind of neighborhood schools, our TWE environments, our charter schools, and being able to take those collaborative practices, the TWCs that happen across schools. The ways that schools like Sugar Creek and Glacier Edge have combined in their theory of action work, supporting the same two strands has been amazing. The adoption of school-based leadership team structures and the shift from the sit teams as they were to really developing the school's theories of action. And the goals that are set in the different areas of that theory of action, aligning those and making sure that our schools are supporting implementation of here is this work that we feel is going to move the needle for our students. Supporting staff around that work, not just kind of ending with a PD session, developing coaching cycles and walkthrough cycles that look at the implementation of that in the classroom in a non-evaluative way, bringing that information back to the school-based leadership teams to adjust. Hey, here are things that are going really well, we're ready to move ahead, here are some things that we actually need to live in a little bit longer, all grounded in data, beyond some of the numerical quantitative data we see here, but what's going on in classrooms? And the feedback that it's leading to for our teachers to help build their practice and the trust that's been developed in that and the climate that's been built in that work of kind of supporting teachers to be agents in their own improvement through the time that's been given and the support from not just their teammates, but the coaches in the buildings. And that has all been done with an intentional focus on literacy. And so I think it's very powerful that we're starting with this indicator, knowing that being literate is the foundation for any work that we do in anything and in life. And all of those cycles have been also built with that literacy focus in mind. And so those communities of practice and the work that's happened and all of the curricular resources that we've worked through, the walkthroughs, again, the coaching and all of that are very aligned here. And so we'll start with indicator one, and that is looking at the percentage of students in grades two through nine, meeting the benchmark that we start reading English assessment, and the goal is for that to increase each year. Reminder that we chose grades second through nine because those are the grade levels where in fall, winter, and spring, students take that assessment. In other grade levels, they're not taking that in fall, winter, and spring. So that is an indicator that has met, can see the growth as well as the ratio of the number of students we're talking about when we look at these percentages. That benchmark is 40% or above. And so can see that we are in a place, as of last spring, the end of the year, that 60% of our students were meeting that proficiency benchmark. And just a question, again, are we pausing between each assessment or after each indicator?
After your group.
So let me go.
Gotcha.
Okay, so I'm going to live in STAR reading English and then I'll pause for questions. So indicator one A, another indicator that we have met, is also is around students in those grades moving out of the urgent intervention and intervention bands, STAR reading English assessment. So those are students that are scoring 20% or below. And actually, improvement in this indicator will be noted by actually a decrease, because that shows the students moving out of those two lowest proficiency bands in STAR reading. You can see that is also a positive trajectory that we are on, and our students are on in our district. Oh, I have to put that, oh, gosh. Thank you. So then when we go into our focus groups, the board has access to data, and that speaks to the same things we just looked at in aggregate for all of our students. And that is the percentage of our focus group students in grades second through ninth, meeting the benchmark on the STAR reading English assessment, and that also increasing. And that is an indicator we have met for most of our focus groups, but not all. Thus, what Dr. Clarity spoke to of being kind of in compliance with exceptions. And noted the two focus group areas are Asian students and our students with disabilities as being areas where we have seen some regression amongst all of the other focus groups where you have seen positive progress and students moving. The same can be said for indicator one C, and so that is the percentage of our focus group students in those grade levels, again, moving out of the urgent intervention and intervention bands. We see similar progress there with the exception being, again, our Asian students, our students receiving food or spice lunch, and our students with disabilities, we saw positive progress in all of the other focus groups. And it's important to note, in our school's theory of action work and our continuous improvement work, they have self-identified after looking at their own school's data, a focus group for their school that they are disproportionately underserving. And it's important to note that of the 19 of the 22 goals that our schools set were met in their theories of action, and of the focus groups our schools set, nine of 10 were met. And so that really purposeful work in attending to a group of students that they're seeing in their data that they are underserving, that that is leading to growth. And our trusting that as we continue to live in this data and our schools are continuing to make those decisions, that we will continue to see growth for all of our focus groups, knowing that that intentional work and the moves that they're making, it's not just about naming the focus group, they're actually identifying work that is going to support that as well. They're uplifting those students in data conversations, they're uplifting those students in their walkthroughs and their coaching cycles, that we will continue to see that growth as that process continues to be normative for the purpose. And then lastly, indicator two, want to make special note of, one of the things that we've done that we spoke to last week in our district has been building our ediklima system and our data culture in our district. And in doing that, we have built up that system, aligned that with Renaissance, which is the vendor that, that manages STAR. And have noticed areas of misalignment and making sure that our board results policies align with our continuous improvement plan goals, align with the data that's in that system with what was intended to be used for in STAR, in the work that our classrooms and teachers and teams are doing in the school level and in areas where we have noticed misalignment. We have adjusted that and made those, made those changes. And in this particular measure, this, we've surfaced through all of that work that this is actually an unreportable measure. With the reason being that STAR does not allow us to answer a yes or no in students meeting a growth target, because STAR does not support that, those setting those targets in the way that some other assessments do. It's simply how students are, again, percentage-wise progressing in that assessment relative to their same-age peers with a similar score profile. And so what generates is a percentage. And that percentage falls in low growth, high growth, or making adequate growth. And so we have made that accompanying shift in our school's continuous improvement plans to make sure that that aligns with the intention in Renaissance and something that is reportable. And you will not see data there once again, because that is not a dataset that STAR allows us to look at and can see the executive summary or recommendation for amending that measure to be something that can report and that aligns with the work or something. So I will pause there. What questions do you have about STAR reading English?
Just a clarification. Thanks, Adam, for the, for a very clear presentation there. We've got some, we have a new requirement, so I just want to make sure that our internal processes of a school improvement plans are brought to light. So when we talk about our school improvement plan, each school develops a, a plan of action based around their individual student data, their school-based leadership teams. We think about, we know teachers or educators feel valued and have a level of accountability when they are part of that decision-making process. So that also includes the focus groups that, that SPOGs and staff decide to focus on as part of school improvement are at the building level. There is conversation and discussion with our, with, with Central Office in a support fashion to talk about, you know, those selections that are made and to us to ask those, you know, inquiry-like questions if, you know, if there's a situation where the data does not support the selection of the focus group. So that, that does happen and occur, and I just wanted to name that integral part of this, of this process, because we, we never want to be seen or felt as a top-down or heavy central office. So these, and so for their school-based leadership teams and our buildings are able to develop these school improvement plans that are supported by Central Office, not the other way around.
Thank you for calling that out. That was one of my questions of kind of, is there a checks and balance between the school, school knows itself the best? And then Central Office, somebody else should kind of, from an outside perspective, sign off. If we have a question about the proposed, sorry, these questions for Meredith. We have a question about the proposed replacement indicator wording, which is awesome. Thank you for putting that in there. Do we ask it now, or do we wait until we take it over?
If it's like a substantive question, I think, let's take the indicator questions for after we've approved the report as-is, and then we can circle back, because there's time to navigate that.
I like that.
That way we keep it.
Kind of separate, yeah.
Okay. Talking about the, like, the holistic approach that each site's doing, I think it was incredibly valuable to have this site, because it's in the spring where we can go and see, is this in action? Because seeing all the numbers, again, it's kind of hard too. Okay, what does this mean? But when you see, this is the engagement of the educators and the leaders at each site, and these are the kids we're talking about, because each of these percentage points is a child. Like, that really, for me, to, it brings it full circle, because I thought it was really valuable at the time, but then to see it translated, this is, this is the result of that work. You know, and I also think it's important that, as you noted, the sites have identified these areas where there is maybe room for improvement, or there's the exceptions. The sites themselves have identified these exceptions as well. So it's not waiting a whole year for a monitored report. This is holistic, this is ongoing, this is embedded in the culture of our school and continuing to be so. Is that, it's a huge amount of work, and it's, again, we're looking just at numbers, which is, which is great to see, this is a way to quantify it. But I just want to say about the people behind the work and you all leading the work and the kids.
And hopefully, you know, as we move forward and as we learn more and do better, you know, through the leadership letter and the weekly, the bi-weekly communication, you'll see, you know, at the end of each assessment window. So STAR is given three times a year, so you could expect that it's going to be more than just once a year. So as we do those cycles of data assessment and analysis, you'll see and hear about it through the leadership letter and, you know, board presentations and things like that. So it is this constant cycle, and then when you all visit at the end of the year, again, foreshadowing May 2023, you'll see, again, additional things that we're doing, that tie back to the work. And so as you said, it becomes more than just a data point, it's a student, it's a phase, it's the work, it's the principal, it's the teacher, and the educators. And it all becomes this beautiful picture of success for our students.
All right, Rosa Maria.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. So I know earlier you guys spoke about our Asian and students with disabilities, numbers decreasing from last year to this year. When I looked at the report, unless I'm looking at it wrong, I also noticed our socioeconomic, economic disadvantaged students, their numbers also appear to be ever have decreased from, from last year to this year as well. Am I, did I look at that?
In one of, one city.
In one city.
Oh, I see.
In the other two, they were not.
Right, so to answer your question, great question, and I noticed even, the, our Asian students and our students with disabilities with a trend across our indicators. Our students, our social, our students with, or social economics was they here or there, but it wasn't a trend across multiple, multiple areas. So, yeah, it was a great note, and in that situation, yes, but not, not trending in support of it was a concern as compared to Asian students and students with disabilities.
And so as we're looking at the places where there's exceptions, I kind of just want to go all back to the executive summary. You've identified like the leadership moves that have taken place since this, and, and those are in response to the data that we're seeing. Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
Because I think that's important to see, like, the, the data is just instructive. And this is the responsive steps that are being taken, such as, you know, creation of the more coherent organizational instruction for student services and academic services. And that would be in response to what we're seeing as far as data.
And a call out, you know, we opened up with celebrating Country View. Country View is an amazing example of how, when you apply these leadership moves over time, so it didn't, didn't get there overnight, it's going to stay consistent, we're, you know, doing it with fidelity. The leadership moves there show that this is, this is what happens. And so Country View, over time, has been able to move in incremental steps in the right direction. And so, you know, that's, that's the work of the leadership moves. I mean, you know, we execute things with fidelity and we're intentional. And so to your point, yes, that's, this is what happens, moves, and then the results.
Imagine intentionality and consistency, things, things really happen.
I'd just like to add a little comment to that, that, you know, we didn't really talk about this last week, but I think as a board, we've sort of talked about this, about the, to piggyback the piece that you showed last week about the story of data. And these being standardized tests, there's sort of inherent story to all of that too. And these are these sort of benchmark touchpoints, but these don't happen if teachers are not given the time and space to daily understand what learners are achieving, what learners are struggling with. And like you said, Adam, the time and investment that teachers are taking to be that deeply connected and knowing students from an academic and personal level to be able to have those daily conversations. These are sort of mini snapshots that we get to kind of segregate and talk about from a bigger perspective. But even just to highlight that for the sake of parents, families, that these, these conversations around assessment don't just live with these standardized pieces. And though I appreciate the chance to talk about these at this bigger level and measure sort of larger outcomes, that is the piece, I think, that I feel so passionate and excited about, that we're trying to construct schedules and timeframes for educators to be able to dig in every day around specific learners and to be able to spend the time investing in their stories as students in our district.
Fantastic segue. We're going to actually, are going to shift as a district that values two-way immersion construction and the opportunity that we provide there. We give equal time and space to look at our results in our two-way immersion program using the STAR reading Spanish assessment. And to your point, in our schools, Sugar Creek and Banner Ridge, our high school now in Glacier Edge, the really rich, deep, cognitively heavy conversations our teachers are having in our two-way immersion classrooms, they're having those about students in multiple languages. And the high standard our teachers hold for themselves, just want to give and really call out the kind of additional layer of supporting learners that happens with our amazing two-way immersion classrooms. And so Rosa Maria, we'll talk through some of the additional leadership moves that support growth in our two-way classrooms.
Okay. Like Adam said, we give equal attention to both languages, because in our TWE program, the goal is for students to become highly literate, which means that they are able to read and write just as, at high levels in both languages, in Spanish as well as in English. The data that you see here is only students in our TWE program, because only students who are constructed in Spanish, which would be the students in TWE. And Spanish literacy are the ones that take this test as opposed to other programs that we have across.
that we have across the district, supported by the RTEs, which we don't assess either. But as you can see, indicator three shows that the students did make growth and meet the benchmark. One thing that I wanted to point out is that the number of students who are now taking the test has increased. That was something that we had overlooked in the past is assessing our middle school. Now we are assessing our middle school. And just to make you aware, our middle school, the percentage of students meeting the benchmark at the middle school level is higher than the elementary. That is to be expected as students grow in their languages. One thing to remind you is that sometimes, many times in TWEET programs, literacy might be a little slower to start than it does eventually catch up and is higher than the general literacy score. So I think the rest of the district. Indicator three A is, I've seen how many students are moving out of urgent intervention and intervention bans. As you can see, we have decreased the number or the percentage of students that are in this category, which is the goal. To show that even in Spanish assessment or Spanish literacy, we do want students to, we do monitor to see who the students that have it by needs and we do respond that way. And some things that I wanted to also point out with these two is that leadership moves that we have such as, we have something called TWELC. So late start Mondays, our families coordinator at the elementary as well as a band coach are reviewing these meetings one Monday a month where all TWEET teachers meet as horizontal teams as well as vertical teams. What they do in these meetings is that they are reviewing data, they are doing new learning, they're looking for areas of need, they're responding, planning on how to respond and working with their grade alike partners to, to help, to really support each other, collaborate. Also, something else that I wanted to, also, to your touches is that this past summer, there was a lot of work on bilingual units. So the TWEET teachers use the bilingual unit framework as their curriculum guide. And looking at the needs of the students this past year, they could review that. And then just Glacier, Adam had said earlier, like Glacier Edge and Sugar Creek do work together very closely because they have very similar programming, they have very similar demographics and number of multilingual learners.
Rosemarie, can I ask you a follow-up quickly? You just mentioned the, the meetings that are on Mondays. Are you talking about elementary and middle?
Right now it's elementary. The, the middle school do have once a month meetings, most of them whole teams, which would be Wednesday after school.
Okay, so the Monday one you're talking about is elementary, right? Okay, and high school is not part of that yet? Not included in that?
Okay. One thing that I did want to show is three D, we are working on, meaning that we're not quite there yet. The reason is because not all of our focus groups met this indicator. Our students with disabilities did not meet the benchmark last year. However, if you look at the indicator three C, focus group students that moved out of the intervention, urgent intervention bans, we did meet that as well as our students with disabilities. So even though the benchmark might not be there, the progress and growth for those students did. Thank you for calling that out. I think that's easy to miss when we're looking at the data without it being specifically noted that we may not hit a benchmark, but that there's, there's progress being made in between the two indicators. Thanks. Yes, and then just as an indicator, again, Adam had said earlier about we do not have a report. And would also recommend the same, the same. Sorry, recommendation for English, be a flat suspension.
General question, I am embarrassed that I did not pay as much attention to the denominators as I should have. Because it's crazy that TWEET almost doubled in a year. That's amazing. On the focus groups, clearly if you add of all the denominators, it's much more than the 523 students that we have. Meaning that people are dynamic, they can fit into more than one focus group. So I have a general question, is there a limit on how many focus groups we have students qualifying for, or do we have students qualifying for like four focus groups? Is there, we just say, hey, if you meet the criteria for this focus group, that student falls into that group and that's that. Okay.
Based on enrollment process and what we are required to report through federal reporting, through that enrollment process, is that what we have to do?
My only other question that I, it's definitely not related to this indicator, but I would love to understand maybe in the future, how we are or if we are planning on growing our TWEET program just based on clearly what it looks like quite a bit of interest in TWEET. And clearly we want to make sure we're not putting all of our funds or treasure there when all of our students need to be benefited, of course. But would love to just understand how we plan for that growth because it is growing.
Well, I want to remind you, the, the students were always there. They were just not taking Star Reading Spanish Assessment.
Oh, that's super.
That is why the number is so much lower from spring 2021. When that was surfaced, we built that into our assessment calendar and are going to see a similar jump when you look at this next year. Because we are going to make a similar shift for our high school. And so they will begin taking the Star Reading Spanish Assessment now that that trend has moved into ninth grade, beginning in winter, and then they will be added in when you look at spring data for next year.
So spring of next year should be like a real witness test of roughly how many TWEET students we have in our district?
No. So it could be two-way immersion, but then we still also support our multilingual learners outside of two-way immersion.
That's correct.
So, but to answer your other question, yes, we are actively planning and discussing, you know, what are our next steps to support our two-way immersion program? Because while, as Adam stated, we did assess our students for the first time, our numbers are growing exponentially. We realize that we have to do something to address and support our students.
In three years, we will have full, full kindergarten through 12th grade twos. Our first class will reach seniors.
So are we, can I just ask third time point? So now that the ninth graders are here, they will take the STAR Spanish. And then we will have the full second to ninth grade band, but with TWEET, are you planning to expand that? So you won't have like K1s and you won't have 10 through 12 taking it? Or will that be different for TWEET than it is for?
No, we will be the same. And the reason being, our kindergartens take STAR early lit. And Renaissance has actually added in an early literacy Spanish assessment that we will begin taking that is not simply a, you know, poor translation of English. It's, it's embedded by our multilingual team as this, this finally being of like real quality.
But that wouldn't be in here, the rural literacy, that's not in here, right?
Yeah, then our first graders transition based on their proficiency level in early lit to Star Reading. And because of the different groups of students that will take that, we'll begin reporting just like for Star Reading English in second grade through ninth grade. And our students don't normally take STAR outside of just a progress monitoring tool and STAR assessment, yeah.
So the next time we see this data would be the full second through ninth. We would have that, because after that, we'll be TWEET students aging up to 10, 11, and 12, but we won't see additional data. Right. So that roughly, you know, whatever the class size is, I guess it's 70-ish, will be added and then that will be the full cadre of second through.
After, after the ninth grade year, then we start looking at the SEAL, meaning the SEAL for literacy requirements. And that would be what we use to.
Okay. Okay. So we're almost at the full numbers, not quite yet there, but we will.
So just want to make sure that some of the questions that Dr. Hawkins' question or statement resonates that by asking, asking simply around TWEET is not all language learners. Because I, that's actually one for our community as well, because that's probably one of the most issues, some of them in our district is TWEET as multi-language learned and that's, that's not. So I just wanted, as I heard these questions, and if we began just talking about language learners, I want to make sure that TWEET is a component of that, but we're talking about all language learners and that unless we identify all language learners, then not only TWEET will be a massive significant portion of our population. Also, again, we, Adam said at our last, in our last video, we talked about, no, I'm sorry, Maria said it last time, we talked about our access as our fastest-growing population. And the most crucial is, is language learners. And we want to make sure that our community and board fully know that and our strategy should match that.
And the importance of looking holistically at our assessments. And that's really where access, access come in because we have so many more language spoken in Spanish. And so many of the strategies that are being implemented in the school support all of our language learners, knowing that there's some specific ones that support our Spanish speakers. There are very specific strategies to support our multilingual learners in our different charters. And all of those themes our schools are attending to very unique to their context. And through the support of Rosa Maria and her coaches in that program and teachers having conversations about supporting well beyond just the language of Spanish, and we support a lot of other languages in our history. So we'll shift now to our youngest learners. And that is again, the STAR early literacy assessment. So that really looks at foundational literacy development to be able to support our students to grow as kind of budding leaders. And so we can see the same benchmarks apply, that the percentage of kindergarten students meeting that 40% threshold of achievement in the STAR early literacy assessment has increased. And so looking at the progress we're making for our youngest learners and setting them down a path of success in our district. Once again, knowing that that is the foundation for their access to instruction in any content area are seeing that positive growth, as well as for all of our identified focus groups. Focus groups at the kindergarten level are showing progress on these, our early literacy assessments. Going back to our support on the leadership moves moving forward, one of the decisions that we made as a district, stemming from work that our elementary schools leaned into was actually adding in a curricular resource at the third through fifth grade level to continue that foundational literacy instruction. Right now, our Lucy Coffins units of study support that instruction at the kindergarten, first and second grade level, but did not have a research to support our educators in meeting that same need third, fourth, and fifth. And so we have adopted the SANDA resource to support that instruction, knowing how important that phonics development is leading into middle and high school and are excited to see our data this year and what a full year of instruction in that at the third, fourth, and fifth grade level might do to impact our data moving forward.
Is that at every school?
All of our neighborhood schools. Our charters have the opportunity to look into that, but they also have the unique ability to look critically at their own instructional resources about the things that SPOG controls.
So these are, that are in kindergartners, last year first graders, that are current first graders. So interestingly, what will happen in spring of this year is we'll be able to see how the early learning, you know, literacy interventions that have been data-driven kind of influence the literacy as, as they move forward. Well, I guess it won't be this year because it won't, it'll be second grade that they do it. And I want to point out, just because we don't have something that's measuring a first grade band, doesn't mean we are ignoring first graders. This is how, just for, for the community watching, this is just a snapshot of how we've measured data and where we've, we've looked to indicators to develop measurement. But I think it will be exciting to see how our, how the numbers change and grow when kids have been kind of, have the data-based approach move forward.
And another key item of note, when looking at the, the work of our, beyond our amazing teachers in our kindergartens across our district, but the commitment our district has made to our BAFI program. A primary, first five years program in support of our students from birth to three, a three-year-old for early, early learning work. And then there are many BAFI sites across the district and the collaborative practices that are implemented across those sites and in a agreed-upon collaboration that happens all the time between those sites and staff that are everywhere in our community but don't, aren't often seen because they don't have kind of one home. They're supporting those various sites. And I want to call out the, I think, the work that also they're doing that is attributing to some of the progress we're seeing in our students in kindergarten because of the support that's been built for our students prior to entering into our kindergarten classes in this district.
So I just want to clarify the early literacy assessment tool from STAR. It's focused primarily on like decoding, word recognition, spelling, things like that.
Yeah, letter sounds, letter names, different sound elements, like really kind of reading, like reading basics and things just like that.
Okay, then with that, we get to transition from some of our youngest learners to some of our oldest with indicator six and you move into our ASPIRE, ACT ASPIRE reading assessment. As you learned last week from Karen, the ASPIRE test has been sunsetted by GPI. So this will be the last cycle that you're looking at the ASPIRE results. We will transition to the pre-ACT and take that for the first time this spring. It is worth noting that all of the other assessments that you saw today, the STAR assessments are taken multiple times throughout the year. These ASPIRE results are administered once a year. So these results reflect spring of 21 and the spring of 22 in that way. So when we look at indicator six, the percentage of students in grades nine through 11 meeting the college readiness benchmark of the ACT ASPIRE reading assessment will increase each year. And we did see a 2% increase for all of our students in that indicator. With that though, as we dig deeper into indicator six A and look specifically at our focus groups, we recognize both the opportunity and the urgency to maximize learning for students in our focus groups. For four of our focus groups, we saw an increase in students meeting that college readiness benchmark. And for four of the focus groups identified, we saw a decrease in that. So thinking about the leadership moves that Dr. Clarity highlighted in the executive summary, as well as Adam highlighted in his opening remarks, all of those pieces are alive and well and the high school team is digging into that. Everything from building their, their school-based leadership team to writing their continuous improvement plan and really wrapping their theory of action around our North STAR and those themes of disciplinary literacy and collaboration. I did want to call out two very specific leadership moves that the high school team has taken in response to this very data that we're looking at. One of course is again, that, that wrapping their theory of action around the North STAR and identifying their focus groups as a result of digging into this piece of data. The team has really recognized the importance of ensuring that students have lots of opportunities to become literate and to practice their skills, reading, writing, speaking, listening, thinking, and performing in all of the disciplines. At high school level, teachers who really pride themselves on their content area feel very empowered by this focus on disciplinary literacy and have really embraced it, embraced it wholeheartedly. The high school though has also recognized in their leadership moves, I think, as, as you mentioned, the, the critical need for staff to be able to come together and collaborate. And so in response to this data, one of the leadership moves that the team made last year was expanding and extending the time for high school staff together on late start Mondays. So they have more time together than they did at this point last year to engage in their professional learning needs. There are times to review data, data, their standardized test data, but they've also developed some common rubrics around avid critical reading processes. They're talking about lesson design and they're engaging in their own professional learning around disciplinary literacy themselves. And so recognizing that we really want to leverage this time for staff collaboration in alignment with our North STAR, that's one key leadership move that the team has taken to affect change and to impact these results in a, in a positive way, specifically for students in our, in our focus groups. The other leadership move that the high school team has made in response to this data is in, is in regards to AVID. The high school has had AVID as an elective class for the past several years. AVID nationwide is truly intended to be a school-wide system to support school improvement. And so the high school team has leaned into AVID in that way this year, really leveraging the avid critical reading process to build common language across the teams. So on those late start Mondays, they're looking at the avid critical reading process, which has kind of three distinct phases of activating background knowledge, engaging students with the text, and extended and applying that learning. And we've applied it then across all disciplines as a common framework for us to talk about how we engage students with text, what grade level text is and how different it can look like, look across different disciplines. And so really leveraging avid critical reading process school-wide. school-wide has been a key lever in their, in their mission and commitment to change these results and impact learning for, for our focus group students as well. So looking forward and thinking about where we are with six A, we're not where we want to be yet, right? I think the team is really reflecting and making some of these key leadership moves. And now we're in a place of reflecting and adjusting and monitoring our implementation to know that we're doing this with the kind of intentionality and consistency that we know will lead to results, right? As it says in the executive summary and Adam alluded to, the data we have shows that we've demonstrated when we focus on something with intentionality and consistency, we can make change. And so the high school has some really clear steps and the leadership moves here help impact change, but we can make sure that all of our focus group students can truly be literate and thrive in the global society that we, that we talk about in this way.
Yeah, go forward. And you'll have to ground me in whether this was said last time or whether I just completely made it up. So.
I'm curious.
So both of the leadership moves you talked about really utilizing the late start Mondays. And I know my kiddo has late start Monday every week. And I thought at one point we talked about with the additional Mondays that our community has entrusted us with through the referendum, that we would maybe look at considering for the high school having late start every week?
Day, 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 day.
So can you tell me more?
Just throw us that follow-up there.
It sounds really important to the work that you're doing and I think it, I would just love to hear more about like if that's being tied directly to the moves in the future.
Right, quickly. Yes, to your, to your, to your question. So as Amy was presenting a couple of things that I want to be very transparent, both to our board and to our public about is also naming where we have an opportunity to improve systems. And if we look at our, our systems, there's actually two areas. There's the late start, late start Monday. And so if you look at, as you, as you notice, our middle and elementary have double the amount of opportunity for those collaborative structures as compared to, to our, to our high school. Secondly, we have to be, us to be transparent that if also as we take on the complex work of scheduling, that we must increase the amount of opportunity for in-house collaboration outside of the, the late start Mondays for our high school staff as well, knowing that the schedule as currently, as it currently exists, does not, I would say adequately give, give those, give those opportunities for, for collaboration. And so I think it's important for us to name that when we examine our, our, our structures, that some of the things that are getting away. And we know that we have two areas of our North Star. It's our disciplinary literacy and collaboration is our, is our condo, is our, and that, that structure is not as strong yet here, but identified by staff, central office alike and processes of how, how do we, how do we close that, close that gap, provide more opportunities for student, for our staff to intentionally talk about students' student outcomes in, in those spaces and talk about their craft and increase their craft. So great recognition of, of that, but we were, sometimes we, we smile at each other because we have a cabinet before we come here and we talk about them for two hours and then like someone's going to ask that.
That's exciting to hear. Absolutely. It's very exciting to hear of supporting staff and supporting students. It's such a win-win of like, this is what our losing professionals want anyways, to like learn from each other and do it for students and students clearly benefit from it. So.
Yeah, the high schools really leverage their time this year, everything from the art department chair presenting a model lesson with, with a piece of art as a text to engage all staff in thinking about disciplinary literacy.
I was literally going to ask you how you teach disciplinary literacy in art. And I was like, that's a stupid question.
That's awesome.
And so they, they really thought deeply about how to use that time best. And even when I was presenting something like Metaphop First Aid, which might not seem truly connected to disciplinary literacy, we were following the same avid critical reading process and modeling that for staff to show how that same process can be applied to a variety of texts and in a variety of different ways. And so doubling that amount of collaboration time together on Mondays.
And that's highlighted Nicole, the amazingness also in our TWE classrooms and the work that our, our, our staff have done around language objectives, not just content objectives and learning targets, but language objectives and have seen amazing examples of some of our earlier arts teachers in our schools uplifting language objectives in their particular disciplines, which is actually an amazing support for our English and our multilingual learners that is applicable across any.
Just noting that language proficiency is, is highly correlated with literacy. So maybe having another intentional focus on language proficiency and growing language development, it will provide the foundation that the students need to be able to be by the grid.
Can I ask a follow-up about AVID? Can you remind me, are there AVID principles also seeping into the middle school? Because I thought I remembered, are we carrying it down before the, the students reach the ninth grade junction between middle and high school?
Yes. So there's a formal AVID elective system and we have the AVID elective classes at the middle school level currently. But then we also talk about AVID school-wide and recognizing what are the instructional practices and what are the systems and the elements of leadership and culture that we can use across the school. And all of our secondary schools are leaning into what that can look like. Both of our middle school, or all three of our middle schools, including four then, are also using the avid critical reading process to ground their work in disciplinary literacy.
Okay. So students are being exposed to that before they ever reach high school because they're being exposed to it in middle school and then where?
Yes.
It's more AVID as it, as time goes on.
Exactly. And we're thinking about the power of having common language to students as well and how we're talking about text and how we engage them in this process and build intentionality and when we're naming examples of what's actually literacy as, as our, as our focus on disciplinary literacy.
Yeah. Cause it's a little hard for me when it jumps from middle school assessments to high school. It's just the nature of it. That those college readiness benchmarks start in ninth grade, but then it leads me to think like, what was happening in like seventh or eighth because then all of a sudden they have this bench, they have this assessment, right? And, and what's the lead into that? And I, I mean, I don't know how much time staff has to collaborate across the transition between the grade bands. So.
Yeah. And with, with the transition to pre-ACT, we do, we always just took the ASPIRE one time in the spring and that is now the pre-ACT is required by DPI once in the spring. We do also have the option that we've been exploring, we could take pre-ACT earlier fall administration. So to your point, Christina, then that would capture the incoming ninth graders right away in, in their transition to look at another piece of data at that
Growth. Okay. Yep. Yep.
And because the pre-ACT is aligned with the scale scoring of the ACT, it could help an incoming ninth grader already know, here's my predicted ACT score and to build some agency and empower students to, to think about their own trajectory. Yeah.
Yeah. It's just being a parent of, you know, kids who've made that jump, it seems like a big, you're just, you know, kind of like from the middle school to the high school jump. That's like a big step.
I'm going to try to bring this back to the data here and ask a question. I'm trying to get a sense of the overall story from this data. And the executive summary was excellent, but I almost see two stories. A story developing second through ninth, who are included around certain focus groups and others in terms of whether red checkmarks and that. And then I see what seems to be a different story in, in high school from the data. Not just in terms of there being a red checkmark in that, but in terms of the magnitude of the percentages there for each of the, the focus groups. It, it seems to kind of harken to some sort of different explanation. I wonder how much that's to do with there being different assessments being used and how much that's to do with there being a different skill set that's being assessed. Like there's maybe more of a total skill set being assessed through that pre-ACT or ASPIRE or whatever. I, I'm not sure, but I'm, I'm having trouble reconciling those two stories in my head. And I wonder if you guys have had any insight on that. Yeah.
And John, I think that builds on what I was saying too, because that, that also stood out for me, that it feels like there's a big jump in terms of that gap seems, I mean, the gap exists, but it seems like there's like a accent, maybe because the ACT assessment somehow accentuates that and it just looks more glaring as opposed to the previous assessment. I don't know. It's just, that's also my activation.
Okay. Nice to have a quick opener. So John, the, your, your, the way you're assessing those, those narrative is correct. And I think that goes back to when Dr. Hawkins opened up around our, our work together and, and going, looking at data and having that tell a story, but also tell a story followed by what is the immediate leadership move that needs to happen. When we look at our, at our high school data and noticing a trend where we're doing, where we're trending well in literacy, kind of to nine, but when you get to high school, that is where it's far more explicit that you have to be able to be literate across contents. And our, and our assessments are really testing for that literacy across content. And that's what brought us to the era of disciplinary literacy this year because we were noticing that there were some gaps around how do I make meaning, not just in PLA or in, in reading or reading, reading, in, in reading concepts, but now I have to make meaning for, in, in science, I have to make meaning of it in, in history and, and mathematics. And we were seeing a disconnect there, which led us to our, our North Star, our district-wide goal of, of disciplinary literacy across content and our commitment to that we don't function in a world of initiatives. We know this is a multi, multi-year process to, to close, close, close those gaps. So yes, the proper assessment and the leadership will be a little off with that.
Now I would just add, they are very different assessments. The ASPIRE assessment was over 200 minutes, right? The STAR was a, is a much shorter assessment. The pre-ACT will be somewhere in the middle. The pre-ACT will be taken all-in-one sitting and making a bit more of the ACT about a little over two hours, a little over 120 minutes. So they are very different tests in that way as well. And to Dr. Clarity's point, just the, the rigor and the necessity of meeting a college readiness benchmark shows that I can use literacy skills across all these content areas and apply my learning in, in these very different ways. And so I appreciate you lifting up the, the different stories and the work that we continue to do to support that transition. To your point, Christina, for me tonight, so it's not feeling like a stark jump, not just in assessments, but in all of the different ways we can, we can support them.
I think what's really helpful, kind of London's story, is seeing the leadership moves that are tied to it. I think that's what is, the, the data is neither good or bad. I mean, that's just data and it's what you're doing with it. I think that's critical. I think we can also look at and say, it's great that we're making progress, but there's still some, some pretty significant discrepancies between our focus groups that have to be addressed. But let's also celebrate the fact that progress is being made. So there's, it's, it's a two-parter and I appreciate the proactive approach that let's figure out how we continue to do the good work and then let's address where there's maybe numbers that are not quite what they should be. That's where I think the, the hearing, the leadership moves, like you were saying, is kind of the, the part that ties it together. I want to know how, how it'll, you know, we're just not admiring the data. And I, I appreciate that that's not the approach that you're taking. And this feels, it doesn't feel very intentional.
No, I, I, I tell a story a lot, kind of half, half joking, half not, that, you know, as a building principal, I, sometimes I looked at data and celebrated way too fast and there's sometimes I looked at data and applied it after the next day. And, and sometimes it, and Amy knows, I was very serious about it one time. But we, it's, again, it's about the, how do we understand what's happening in our organization, make very solid staff-informed and student-informed leadership moves along the way and then bring that. Because the moment that you start, we start high-fiving each other around great data and just stay with those high-fives, next year's not going to look great. So it's about those continuous processes along the way.
Oh, no, no, no. I was going to just add in closing, you know, we talked about, we, we talked about enlisted several leadership moves, but I think it's important to know, you know, how we repurposed an entire position in academic services when we decided to not replace the assistant superintendent, the special services to then pour that money into focus on teaching and learning. And so that being said, you know, and then the work around aligning our organizational structure. And by moving, you know, you all, I think someone asked, you know, what are we doing as we looked at our students with disabilities? You know, that work of aligning student services into academic services, you know, marrying the two, it's, it's, we can't have our students that need the most living over here and not having discussions about academic and time and the standards. I think, you know, just our, our continued work at working with our teachers and digging into the standards so that they have a deeper understanding of the standards, what to teach, why to teach and when to teach. So, I mean, we've got some work, but I thought it would, I'd be remiss if I didn't also call out those two specific leadership moves that will impact our focus groups that are tied to our students with disabilities. That being said, give it to me, Arda and the board and Dr. Clarity. That concludes with everything we have to say.
Thank you so much. This has been really informative. It just, it helps kind of think about progress in a very clear way, but I also appreciate that wherein expectations haven't been met. You're not shying away from it. Let's, let's put it out there because we can't fix it. We're not seeing it. And so let's see it. And I think that combined with the leadership moves that are in place is really the work that we want to, we want to see and appreciate it for. Are there any questions from the board as we finish up with the, the process?
Not really a question, but a comment.
Yeah.
When I first took a look at the data regarding six A, it scared me. I panicked. Meredith knows. I panicked. I was like, okay. But to hear you say that there's a plan in place to address this, that made me feel a whole lot better about it. Because at first I'm like, okay. All sorts of thoughts are going through my head. COVID's exacerbated a problem that was already there, but what are we going to do to address it? So I'm very grateful and thankful that, that strides are being made to address what's going on here because this is huge.
I think it is about staying the course, right? All those leadership actions, it's about the school-based leadership team and the continuous improvement plan, really working in a really intentional and thoughtful way will then yield the results that we need for these students and having a clear plan, understanding the data and having a clear plan, sticking with that.
Just a tiny comment for future. I think it was super helpful that you guys presented the sneak peek of the data before last week. Is there are any kind of similar things as we move on to results? It was so nice to be able to just digest the, the scores and the tests and the understanding for what it was and then the next meeting go through that. So thank you for doing that. And if you have an opportunity in the future, our result policies, that would be super great too.
Thank you so much. Really, really appreciate the time that you spent on this. I'm sure this is not a, a quick process to put together. And, and the time that you spent with us last week really did pay off in helping us understand the, the assessments. And I think that's something that we can kind of even refer back to as we go through, that we have that presentation for you. So. Great.
Let's kind of hold the team here unless there, because it's in a war test now, but have they, do they have questions for, before they go back?
Last of the questions?
I'm still having the question about the.
I do still have that about the replacement test that that'll be after.
We're just going to have questions about the data and the report as presented. It looks like, looks like we're good. Okay.
And we, and we need Adam for the indicators piece of it.
Okay. So usually we don't do an OE and a result policy in one night. So maybe this is like a double win right away. Usually we try and stagger them, but tonight we just, we got lucky. Okay. But it is, it's very, it is interesting to, to see even the first round of monitoring data. Okay. So members of the board have received and discussed the superintendent's monitoring report for result policy 2.1. Now it's our responsibility to consider the report as evidence of reasonable progress. I'm going to accept a motion to accept and approve the report as presented. Motion from John. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from John. And now I stop. So now we discuss and we're discussing, at this point, we're discussing, does the report as, do we accept the report as presented? So with the, with the areas that are accepted, that are considered not in compliance, as it's presented to us, do we have any disagreements? it's presented to us, do we have any disagreements with the report? Or does the evidence that's presented support the district's assertions about reasonable progress being made? With the exception, with the exception that the district has identified.
I think it's important to note that if people are just looking at this in a cursory way, that it's, that achieving reasonable process or progress with exceptions, as noted below, is, is a great outcome because we're looking at these details. So, so yes, I just wanted to reiterate that.
Okay, that's a good point to reiterate, yeah.
Where it's supposed to be.
Are there any, are there, are there any concerns from the board that your, your view of the evidence doesn't match how the district assessed the evidence?
So, should we talk about this?
Okay. Nicole, cause indicators. Okay, so, so with that, if there's no other questions and we are in agreement with the district's assessment of reasonable progress, we have a motion from John, we have a second from Jen, all in favor of approving the report as presented, signified with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The report has been approved as presented. Thank you so very much. We appreciate it. Okay, guess what time it is, Nicole? Now we can take a look at the indicators. So again, if we're looking at our handy little monitoring process, it's page 10 and 11.
We're trying to do a much better job of getting exact details of our board notes.
Okay.
Just for that fold, can you mention that was six oh with one, one absolute?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So when we're talking about making modifications, the superintendent can initiate a modification at any time. However, it does have to come to the board for approval because we are in charge of approving indicators. The standard for approval is, is it reasonable? That's the standard. So with that, we have indicators that have been proposed. Is it back up? And find the exact wording. It's on the second page of the result report. The request is that indicator two would read the percentage of students with student growth percentiles and the typical growth and the high growth ranges on the STAR reading assessment, reading English assessment will increase each year. Is that accurate? Okay. Do we have a, again, looking at reasonableness, is there any concern that that is a unreasonable indicator?
So I have a concern, not about the indicator itself, and would love my fellow board members' feedback. So if we read R 2.1, it says each student will be literate and numerate, able to achieve their personalized goals. The things that I really liked about indicators, which I agree with our academic services team, if we can't measure them, they're not good indicators, but it was, to me, two of the indicators that spoke to personalization. It was like, are you growing in your standard growth projection according to you? And my only concern is, if we can't measure something, we can't measure it. But I worry that we're straying from this idea of a personalized growth for our students, and maybe I'm just missing how we measure that elsewhere. I have no grand ideas on how to fix that, but that was the only thing, I, I love the way these are worded, but it's starting to feel like it's moving away from that personalized case for me. John, tell me why I shouldn't be very.
Well, I'd like to hear, how is that addressed in the indicator? I mean, do you feel like that the indicators are, are moving away from that? Because I think it's a valid question.
So I guess I'll start with the indicator, and actually, this is where STAR by nature kind of controls for that. Because you're looking at, while it's not comparable to you, right? We're always looking to support growth. It's looking at, which is something that other assessments don't necessarily do. You're kind of compared to all students who have ever taken this assessment, and what STAR allows for is remembering that that student growth percentile is looking at how you are doing compared to students. Now, when I say just like you, I don't want to overspeak, but students with a similar score profile at the same grade level. And so there are a lot of factors that make each of our students unique, but the fact that STAR looks at that measure and looks at students who are similar, similar to you when you take the assessment and is looking at how you are doing compared to all of the students kind of like you with that score profile kind of, kind of controls for that. And the personalized nature comes into, and it would be a little harder and more abstract to measure, that's where we get into the work that's happening every day in the class. I mean, there's not one indicator that we're going to be able to report because of the personalized nature of support that our teachers are putting in place. Interventions that they're making, what's creative about this student growth percentile and why we feel very strongly as an academic service team that they're instilling in there is because it looked, it really looks at the prior students who are making across all proficiency. Our students who are scoring proficiency-wise at like the 90th percentile, we have a responsibility to help them grow. SGP ensures that we're reporting on that. If a student was currently behind grade level, it's also looking at how we're supporting their growth and forces our system to meet the needs of all of our students. And so again, while it's not going to necessarily measure that personalized work that's happening, it's kind of by design, it's meant to be done on a daily basis in the classroom. We're really not going to get, there's no measure that exists that's going to get to that. But again, the way STAR looks at data, it's really the best we can get that's going to measure the personalized work that's happening in classrooms, is helping that student grow unique to their needs. I'll pause there, but that, that's a very good question, and I think coming at it that way, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to keep these indicators in there because there's no one quantity of way to measure that. But it's important to be there because we do have a responsibility, not just looking at proficiencies, but how we're growing the students across.
So one thing, a couple, one thing to thank for Adam. The one thing I would add to that is, is the STAR is one of the few assessments that you have ownership because of, you're doing this fall, winter, spring, so it's my score against my score. From that point, it's might be against, and you, again, you don't want to, and I ask people to compete with yourself, but as a student, as we want students to have accountability and ownership with.
We'd rather them compete with themselves, yeah.
And so I'm going to get on at six o'clock and what is, what is my evidence that I am making progress as a student throughout this year? And so we have these three times where we get our opening data in the, in the fall. In the winter, you might make the appropriate progress compared to my own score last time. In the spring, I might make the appropriate progress compared to my own score last. So you get the internal personal growth as well as your comparative to students like you are. And I say that loosely, like I don't know, because each student's individual, but similar characteristics, you know, based on grade level.
Any other questions on? So indicator four is similar, just with the language of the percentage of students with student growth percentiles and the typical growth and the high growth ranges on the STAR reading Spanish assessment will increase each year. So the same type of language just applied for the English and Spanish assessments. And again, as we're looking at, is this reasonable, the reasonable standard, is it reasonable for us to accept these indicators as presented by the, the administration?
Can I just ask a follow-up on that? Just for clarity out from the public, how does STAR, when we're talking about personalized goals and that, how does STAR control for historical biases that you know are inherent in these assessments? Because with, I see these as being better indicators because they do tend to do that by nature. So I just wonder if you can comment on that.
Yeah, STAR doesn't, we do. So when we are explicit with increasing representation in our curriculum, we are explicit in our resources being culturally relevant, we would never, I just say, someone's going to make a fortune if they figure out how to do it in the assessment world. That's why it's our, our responsibility as an organization, and it's written in our own policy, but all due to the administration that we are the most responsible for those biases.
Can I just ask a similar but kind of tangential question about some of the assessments? Why don't we wait until, this is just a me wanting information question, it's not relevant to this.
Okay, are there any other, any other questions or concerns about the indicators that have been presented by the administration? If not, I would accept a motion to approve as reasonable. I have a motion from Christina. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Jen. All in favor of approving indicator two and indicator four to be modified as presented, signified with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Indicator two and indicator four have been modified as requested. So thank you very much. That was a six two zero. Or six, yeah, six.
Oh, six.
With Joe gone.
Okay.
I knew what you're saying.
All right. So again, I buy this repulses, but we're, we're just so trying to get, get everything actually on our website. So this means we'll need, this marks the end as well. We'll need to go into our website, pull our, our dash two one one, change the indicators for six point, you just said.
Indicators for two, two indicators.
Indicator two and indicator four. And then it starts to generate or print hard copies of those for, so we need to do that before those hard copies are printed.
Okay, thank you, everybody. And thank you again for presenting, we appreciate the, going through this process as we kind of work through our, our monitoring process. So thank you again, just for the board, I feel like I need to like channel Yana for just a second because she's always brought up such an important part of, we're looking at a slice of our results policies. And really, it's such an interconnected, we built such interconnected policies, so how a student is feeling in their wellbeing is going to impact how they are achieving. And we're looking at one little piece, and I think that's so important and critical that we're looking at one piece. And also simultaneously important to recognize the holistic student is being kind of evaluated your S F score. We're making, we're monitoring just their growth over a course of the year, but it's in slices. Yeah, John?
I just wanted to make a general comment about, one of the interesting things I saw in this data relative to where we've been at historically. I think that, you know, I've heard from some people in the community that there's a lot of interest around how we teach reading in particular, and as indicators are primarily focused on reading. I think that it's interesting to note the different types of assessments and tools that are used that are rooted in different philosophies about reading, from phonics to meaning-making and all those things that really point to the complexity of developing literacy throughout K-12 and the many varied ways that teachers are doing that in the classroom. And that there's no one right or wrong way, but there are a lot of answers, and we're giving our students a lot of tools to do that with. And so I really like seeing a lot of those indicators focused around reading. You know, it sounded like we talked about STAR a lot, but the noting that the early literacy is a different thing, focused on decoding and some of the curricula that does some things like that Lucy can't do, those are good notes to bring out that are pointing to complexity. The other thing that I wanted to note is, again, my first kind of foray into these sorts of policies was on the strategic plan that we had prior in 2018. And the first guiding bit of data, data that we had was put up on the screen, was about the number of students getting Fs in their freshman year in high school. I now realize that was probably the only data that could have been compiled together, which is kind of terrifying, but it meant that we really couldn't ask good questions about why that was the case. We just had a thing that was confounding and based on a lot of complex causes, some of which our societal and cannot be entirely handled by the school board or the school district. But what I like about this discussion, what I think is really neat about the processes and the systems that have been brought to bear in our district over the past year and a half, I think that's right here and a half now, is that not only is it more accountable, not only is it more transparent that you can go and look at the reading data, but it's, it's just a better and more professional way of getting to the questions around where is this coming from, what can we do about it? And to get that part of the presentation from the admin team around, here's the leadership moves that are being made in response to this, that's just not necessarily a conversation you can have with bad data, so.
Definitely not a conversation you can have.
So I just wanted to, to point that out, that is a very large bit of progress and should be commended.
Completely agree.
A long sentence, I think.
But well worth it. Okay.
Adam, thanks so much. So I'll close out the superintendent's report with, with this. First of all, I'd like to thank the academic services team for a phenomenal presentation as well as the operations team inside the house, chat, meeting there. As we move forward, some of the things that came to mind during the presentation that I just want to put there for future reference and just to have in our notes as we go back and reflect on, on these meetings, it's really a desire that we, we wanted to bring to life the intentional leadership moves based on data. And we, I don't say hope, hope's not a strategy. If we go there, that's not, that's not a strategy.
I got questions.
So as we, as we think about those moves, it is really, I'd desire that, that whether the data was good, bad, or neutral, that there's an understanding of the leadership moves and the why line of those leadership moves is a way, I wonder if, even as you think about the intersectionality with results policies and operations policies. As a board member, your, your next question is, so I should see some resources on the financial side of the house that are going towards the areas that we noticed some, some discrepancies, correct? Yes. You know, and, and then having, having those, having, having those move forward. And so while they are two distinct sides of our organization, if we don't bring those sides together in a coherent fashion where the, where the intersectionality happens, then we're losing, we're losing the ability for us to make true progress because our, if, if our priorities are evidenced by our financial backing, you should see that in our, in our budget, that the things that we talked about, that we clearly said we needed to make intentional efforts represented in, in our, in our budget. In our hiring practices, Amy is very humble as she talked about Abbott. Amy is also a national Abbott presenter and speaker on, on, on the national level. It's been there for a good decade now. Yeah, quite, almost there. So let's think about the intentional moves that we make in, in hiring, bringing people into the world, and they should, they're tied to our, our moves and our, and our initiatives that, I said the right word.
Whoa, wow, that's leaked out.
It's a lot, that's a lot in years and education, man.
I know. I've gone the whole year without show. I cannot believe it. I'm not expecting any rest. I'd like to thank everybody for allowing me to speak as a superintendent. There were those as a superintendent's work.
I would just like to follow up on that. And just to, at the first time that we're seeing the results policy and having a chance to, to monitor it, seeing the executive summary and hearing how it was directly tied to action was incredibly helpful. And the section that we've talked about since, you know, previously, but having it come back to this space so we can really make that connection, I think was really valuable for me. And I think the linking it to, there's way to be financial implications, again, these are all cohesive. We're looking at them at slices by time, but to see that they're all implemented, I think is really valuable. Having been intentional.
And I think, again, that all models what the lived experience sounds like for staff on a day-to-day basis. And then I think it also again models how families can think about these data points, that getting a STAR score in the mail is not, you know, just this piece of paper of this one moment in time captured, but it's a moment in time that's being understood at a deep level by the incredible staff that's working with that recipe every day.
but it's a moment in time that's being understood at a deep level by the incredible staff that's working with that recipe every day.
I also want to just thank everybody for the sheer amount of time that goes into creating these reports. I know this is not an easy lift. It's, it's very much appreciated by the board and being able to take a look at, at data and, and information from the financial side that maybe just have never seen presented so clearly and cohesively in a way that actually has meaning to the job of the board is really appreciated and likewise with the results. To be able to see, this is the information that you need and this is how it ties to the work that's happening for us, for the community. It is not an easy process putting this all together, but the time that has been spent is greatly appreciated and really, really valuable for the work that we're doing here and for the work that we can then share with the community. So thank you. I hate to even think about how many hours have gone into this. We just won't even. It's recognized and it's, it's appreciated. Okay. With that, we will move on to the next agenda items. Do we have any public comments? Yep, okay. Past that, we will look at the superintendent's consent agenda. The items under the consent agenda are on the, in board docs. Are there any questions about items on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the superintendent's consent agenda is approved as presented. Next is the board's consent agenda. Again, items are in the board docs. Just in general, when we have, and I'm just kind of saying this for every board member, but also for, for people who's looking at, we have some things that are maybe some new things rather than just our minutes. But we have something that has to be approved by the board as a matter of law. A matter of statute, we aren't going to be debating it. We aren't going to be, it's not a discretionary, it's a statutory approval. That can go into consent agenda. So with that, are there any questions about what's in the consent agenda? Hearing none, board consent agenda is approved as presented. Future agenda items, we have potentially a, a special board meeting on the 19th. We have a potential board retreat that is to be determined. January 19th is our next regular board meeting. Then January 23rd, and then we have into February, which is kind of shocking.
Then January 9th.
January 9th, right? January 9th is the next regular
Not 19th.
No, December 19th is a potential special meeting. Did I say 19?
You did.
It's getting late, numbers are kind of
It's absolutely
Just random numbers, spat around. Thanks for catching it. January 9th isn't as far away as January 19th, so we do have another regular board meeting on the 9th. Thank you for correcting, and then January 23rd. So with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I have, sorry, just one quick question.
Yes.
Is anyone going to the WASB convention?
Jen and Joe.
Jen and Joe, okay.
I just got all the stuff in the mail, so you all will get some preview information coming soon.
There.
So you can inform my voting.
I'm glad to have in-person presence there. Thank you for going.
Request one last year, two?
In person.
Two, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Good clarification. With that, is there a motion to adjourn? Some motion from Nicole. Is there a second?
Second.
A second from Jen. All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This meeting has been adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Got through a lot of information tonight. As we go through, I think we, we talked about what do we do with the board review. I think it's something that we need to look at maybe at our, how do we handle that? You know, again, I have the struggle of the keeping people later after a long board meeting for that purpose, but I want to get a overall idea of where we want to go.